Good evening. I now call the December 20, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting to Order. It is 6:45 PM, and the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of claims.
I would like to make a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $296,135.66. You'll own credit card in the amount of $4,040.20. Manual checks in the amount of $16,330. Payroll and liabilities for 12,222 in the amount of $219,365.91. For a total of $535,871.77.
Second?
We have a motion by Kristy and a second by Kyle. Any discussion? Being then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I vote aye as well. Motion passes. Is there anything else to come before this committee?
Your Honor, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that this packet does include a claim for $100,000 to CWC for their distribution for the Edge half percent funds. And that wraps up all of the city's commitments for Edge funding for the season.
Thank you very much. Is there anything additional? Being then, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 6:46 PM. I now call December 20, 2022, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Dean, since you're here, Carla's... Carla, are you online?
She was.
Yes, Your Honor, I'm here.
Would you be willing to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Starts with I, right?
Yes, it does.
And then I'll do the invocation. When you're ready, Carla.
That means now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of this land, to the citizens, to the people of this world, and to this girl.
Our dear, kind, heavenly Father, we're grateful for the many blessings that are ours this day. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in this wonderful state of Wyoming. We're thankful for the city of Riverton and for the opportunity to serve. We ask thee to bless the citizens of Riverton, that they might have their wants and needs addressed, that we might pay attention to their concerns and be able to make this a wonderful place to live, that it always has been. We ask a special blessing to be with our first responders, our police officers and our sheriff's deputies, our firemen, our ambulance drivers, our dispatchers, all those who put themselves in the way of danger to keep us protected. We ask a special blessing to be with our service members, as they're in their place and doing their jobs, especially during this season of Christmas, as they're away from their families. We ask thee to bless them with knowledge that they are loved and appreciated. We're thankful for the work that we get to do, and we recognize thy hand in all things. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the City Clerk, Dr. Rollcall, please?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Bailey and Councilwoman Cox.
So moved.
Councilwoman Larson has a motion, and Councilman Pronto has a second. Any discussion? It's gonna make it easy where I don't have to look to the other side, isn't it? If we were on a boat, we'd be listing.
If we're playing tug of war, we'd win.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carla, you with us?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of the consideration of the replat of the Eastern Shoshone Business Park from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has a motion. Councilwoman Salisbury has a second. Any further council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Introduction of an oath of office for the Riverton Police Department dispatcher and officer. Interim chief's report, please.
Your Honor, counsel. I'd like to take the time to introduce Officer Jason Hanson, who's born and raised in Lander. As a Wyoming native, he enjoys outdoor activities such as fishing, camping, as well as spending time with his family. He graduated from Lander Valley High School, where he wrestled, played football. Jason's looking forward to a long, enjoyable career with the City of Riverton Police Department. Dispatcher Caitlin Parker was raised in Riverton. She's attended CWC, where she's received an associate applied science human service degree. She's also a certified addiction practitioner assistant in Wyoming, and we're honored to have him with us.
Super.
So if you wouldn't mind...
Do we have to swear any guy from Land or twice, or just once? Do we have to swear any guy from Lander twice, or just once?
Jason Hanson.
Caitlin Parker.
I solemnly swear. I solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. Obey. Obey. Defend. Defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Wyoming. The Constitution of the State of Wyoming. That I have not knowingly violated any law. That I have not knowingly violated any law. Related to my appointment. Related to my appointment. For causes unknown by others. For causes unknown by others. With my discharge. With my discharge, my duties, my office, my fellow.
Uh-oh.
Jason, you want to sign right there? Please.
It's pretty honest.
It's cute. Oh, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you get the bunny ears, Ernie?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
I shouldn't tease Jason from about being from Lander. Both my folks are from Lander, and so it's nice to have.
He's gone.
He's gone, okay. I'll probably get a.
I can take that back. [laughing].
Probably get a ticket here shortly, so. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other item may speak now. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself with the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Alan Moore. I am a member of the Boarded Directors of Idea Inc. Several other members are present. John Gunnison. Kyle Butterworth, Butterfield. You wouldn't go very well on pancakes, would you?
No.
Mrs. Butterworth syrup is what I was thinking of. Idea Inc. has tried to be an active and proactive economic development agent for the city of Riverton for the last thirty-some years. In that capacity, we have seen and done a fair number of things. One of the things that we have noticed is that in any administration, the tone is set by the people at the top. In this case, the tone, I think, for the city of Riverton with regards to economic development has been set by Mayor Gard. And when I say set the tone at the top, there are many different kinds of people and many different ways of doing things. Some people read statutes and say, oh, well, this doesn't allow you to do that. Some people look at the rules and say, I can't find anything that says that you can do that. And then there are other people who say, if it is not expressly denied, it's allowed. In economic development, part of our job is to reduce the amount of friction, reduce the hurdles that new businesses and existing businesses have, to allow them to get the most out of the energy that they have. And I must say that Mayor Gard has done that. He has shown a presence that I think is pretty amazing, because when you go to most any event that is public or semi-public, you will find Mayor Gard there. He will be talking to people, he will be taking the pulse of the community, and when he can, he reduces friction and eliminates wasted motion. Now, we have, on behalf of Idea Inc., a small token that was manufactured right here in Riverton Works, Riverton, Wyoming, by one of our local tenants at the Brunton Building. And it'll be the end, I've forgotten their name. Yes, this is made specifically for Mayor Gard by Makerspace, right here in town. May I approach the podium?
Please.
Now, it looks like a hockey puck, but it really isn't. It's a device that allows you to express your feelings at any moment in time. You can be blue.
Fabulous.
You can be hot.
How about purple?
Or you can be mellow.
You got purple?
Yes, we do.
All right. This is gonna be fun, isn't it?
So here are the controls. With our deepest appreciation, we hereby honor Mayor Gard in recognition of his efforts to advance economic development in Riverton, Wyoming. Thank you, from Idea Inc.
Thank you. Thanks a bunch. Awfully nice. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Idea Inc.
Your Honor, if I may, I'll be acting as Mr. Butterworth right now. [laughing]. As a member of the public.
We're gonna straighten you up with a syrup.
True.
Bring on the pancakes.
I'm a poor stand-in for the rest of the FAST committee. The FAST committee right now is actually in Lander, speaking to the Lander City Council. I am fortunate to have Ernie with me as another member, and we would be remiss if we didn't take a moment and thank you for your service and your support for commercial air service. I will be brief, but I will say Mayor Gard was heavily involved in the Fremont Air Service Task Force before it even had that name, and he was a liaison to the Airport Board when I first joined the city. And as mayor, he's focused on economic development, and specifically how commercial air service supports that. Like I said, I'll be brief, I'll turn it to Ernie to speak for the team.
All right. Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the FAST committee, we thank you for all the efforts that you have done over the years, from the very beginning of what became FAST, to up to the present time. You've taken a great interest in Central Wyoming Regional Airport and the success of commercial air service in Fremont County. You've told the story of Central Wyoming Airport, at Fremont County Association of Governments, at meetings in other communities, and you like to spread the word about how important that airport is to Riverton and Fremont County. And as a member of FAST, we certainly appreciate it and look forward to your continued support.
Thanks, Ernie, appreciate it.
Your Honor, may we approach?
Please.
Ours doesn't light up. [laughing]. But this is a photo of a good day for us. This is the inaugural flight with United Express, of which you are a critical part, and we want to make sure that you can memorialize that.
Thank you.
Wouldn't you rather be in this photo?
What's that?
We can get somebody.
Okay.
I'll come around.
Oh, this is unsophisticated.
Nope.
[laughing].
No, it's not. All right. Let's get the. There we go. All right. That's great, thanks.
I just wanted to take a minute to think. Your Honor.
Yes.
[laughing] Only time you'll call it.
I just wanted to take a minute to publicly thank you for all the work that you've done. On behalf of the city. Sorry. Well, I don't think anybody knows the time, sorry, the time that it takes to run the city. And I just want to say thank you. I'll be glad to have you back.
[laughing].
Thank you.
I love you.
Love you too. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items, consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, December sixth, twenty twenty-two, executive session. Approval of the minutes, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor, earlier this evening, the finance committee met at six forty-five, and we moved to the consideration of claims to be paid, the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. The Elon credit card, in the amount of four thousand, forty dollars and twenty cents. A manual check in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Payroll and liabilities for the twelve to twenty twenty-two, in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, for a total of five hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Councilman Larson has a motion. Councilman Pronto has a second. Council discussion?
Your Honor, all abstained from any warrants paid to travel and confuse.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of the force recommendation on Davis Lane, Public Works Directors' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. Before you tonight is a recommendation from the Fix Our Road Citizen Committee on the Davis Lane Reconstruction Project. This project has been underway for several years now in the planning development. One of the biggest issues with that roadway, besides being deteriorated, is the stormwater drainage in the area. And that was actually the biggest hurdle in the design, or getting it to a point where we were ready to present it to you for a decision. Started back in two thousand sixteen with the council's permission to hire a engineer to look at the project. It was associated with the Gannett Drive project back then. During the course of looking at options for the improvement of that roadway and the drainage in there, we received comments from several of the citizens in that neighborhood. Because of the drainage off Highway twenty-six during a major storm, they would be inundated with water. The drainage was less than capable of handling a major storm. And we've since, with our engineer, come up with a viable plan to deal with the drainage, deal with the groundwater in that area, and plus rebuild, reconstruct the roadway sidewalks, curb and gutter, upgrade the sewer, storm sewer in the area. The engineer's estimate for this project is one million, six hundred and forty thousand. Ten percent of that is contingency, so the actual amount minus the contingency is one million, four hundred, eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. I spoke to the engineer, my engineer today, Brendan Toman, he believes that this number is probably gonna be high. These prices are based on last year's unprecedented high price of everything. So he's anticipating that this will probably come in lower than the top amount, but we did want to cover it. Fund currently holds two million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars to fund this project. Force Committee also committed one million, up to one million dollars in preservation projects through this twenty twenty-three construction season. Whether we would use that all or not is yet to be seen, but we just wanted to give you an idea of where the funds are right now and what our balance would be in June. We would recommend approval of this project if the council sees fit.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Force Committee, Fix Our Roads Committee, Citizens Committee recommendation to initiate the bid process for Davis Lane Reconstruction Project.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Pronto has a motion. Councilwoman Salisbury has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have a discussion. Does the council want to have a discussion? It's not on the agenda, but I can slip it in.
Your Honor. On that amount, how sure are we of, I mean, Hill Street was a disaster, and Sunset was worse. How sure are we of these figures?
Your Honor, I believe we have a good engineering consultant on this. There are always unknowns, and anytime you open up a road and dig. But we've tried to address any potential unknowns, specific to the groundwater that's in that area. We learned a lot when we did the Gannett Drive project. When this was originally put together, the estimate was about one point one million. When we've budgeted, we've increased that to one point five, and so this one point six estimate is pretty close to where we were anticipating. We do have funds in the account to cover it with the one percent fund. So I would say.
Where is our wastewater going there?
Your Honor, Mr. Larson, the way the plan is designed is we're building a new drainage at the bottom of what will have a cul-de-sac in it on the Hutchinson's property. It provides an easement. It'll be piped to where it will surface drain into a rock bed, and then eventually work its way down under the canal into the irrigation ditch or into a drainage.
Okay. All right.
Your Honor, if I could just add on that, and Mr. Eggleson's very capable, and he's definitely taken the lead on this project as of late. I just wanted to make a comment that what we're doing is significantly better than what's existing. Right now, a good portion of the stormwater that's generated on the state highway collects inlets that are on the highway, and then they outlet directly onto the street in between two private property owners' homes. That then just surface flows down the bend of Davis Lane where the ponds are. And then at the end of Davis Lane, there's nothing. There's no cul-de-sac, there's no curb and gutter. And so when we have major rain and storm events, the water that's generated on the highway, in addition to the water that's generated on Davis Lane, just flows. A lot of it overtops the curb and floods private property. And then at the end of what is now Davis Lane, it just goes into Mr. Hutchinson's private property. Some of it affects his shop that's there. Some of it goes into his field. So what we're going to do is we're going to channel that. We're going to pipe it from the point that it currently outlets near Mr. Paskett's home and Mr. Davis's home. That will stay enclosed and underground all the way to the bottom of where the cul-de-sac will be, which is basically the end of Davis Lane currently. At that point, as Mr. Eggleson explained, it will outfall into a controlled drainage swell, and Mr. Hutchinson is okay with that. And it will currently get to a point that is an inlet point near the canal that goes into an existing stormwater system. It goes under the RVID canal, and then eventually ties into our stormwater system.
So we have an easement for that drainage?
Yes, we do.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I think we... Did we do 11? Do we need the recognition of outgoing elected officials? Do you have anything else?
Your Honor, if it's okay, we'd love to take another moment.
Okay. Turn the city administrator's report, please.
Your Honor, counsel, this time I'm speaking as Kyle Butterfield. I want to make that clear. What a challenge to try and recognize and sum up the service of Rich Guard. And I think the easiest way for me to do that is to tell one of my favorite Rich Guard stories. I can say honestly that one of the things I hear most from Rich Guard, as I'm in my current position, and even when I was in my old position, was if you need my help, let me know, or how can I help? Basically, Rich Guard, Mayor Guard, was available. So my favorite story happened about four years ago. And I apologize if I get emotional about this, but that's just who I am. We had another meeting in Lander as a FAST committee. Basically, the situation was fuel prices were impacting our minimum revenue guarantee, and we needed to go to community stakeholders to request for assistance. So the Fremont Air Service team and myself planned to present to the Lander City Council. Mayor Guard was newly elected mayor. He'd been in office for about a month, and he said, "How can I help? I'm available." I said, "Great. Come with me." So Mayor Guard came to the Lander City Council meeting. What he didn't know he was getting into was that I brought my one-year-old, well, not even year-old daughter at that time. Olivia was just born. Courtney was the Cub Scout master and was taking the Cub Scouts swimming, and felt that it was a bad idea to take our brand-new baby to the swimming pool and still try and watch our year-and-a-half-year-old daughter make sure that she didn't drown while the Cub Scouts didn't drown as well. So I said, "It'll be fine. Olivia will just sleep in her little bassinet. I'll bring her to the Lander City Council meeting. She'll be fine." Courtney kind of gave me that look, and she said, "Go ahead." So Rich Guard, Mayor Guard, met me at the Lander City Council meeting and found that I had a baby with me, and it wasn't fine. Of course, as soon as I stood up to speak to the Lander Council, Olivia started screaming. And I'll tell you what Rich Guard did. He took my baby and sued their family. It's so important to me, so I apologize for crying. And he took her in the back room, took care of Olivia, while I was begging and pleading for money from the Lander City Council. And that's who Rich Guard is. He stood in, took care of my daughter, and he's taking care of the city of Riverton. That's my favorite Rich Guard story. It goes without saying that Rich Guard was dedicated as a mayor. I received emails from him constantly after 10 o'clock at night, sometimes after midnight at night. He answered his phone. He wasn't afraid to share his cellphone, and he was always available, and he went to work. I think it's impossible to highlight what Rich Guard did in four years, but I think it's also important to note that early into his mayorship, the world turned upside down. Nobody knew how to deal with COVID-19. Nobody knew what COVID-19 was. Mayor Guard was a year into his mayorship, and what he did is he went to work. He was kind to people, but he went to work and responded. Riverton didn't close. We all came into work. He worked hard to make sure the businesses didn't close. I think that's a highlight that I should mention, that Mayor Guard went to work and he stayed at work. And so I just want to say thank you, Mayor Guard, for your service. My words are inadequate, but you've been a wonderful mayor. And if it's okay, I'd love to invite Mrs. Guard up as well, and I'd like to have the senior staff members come up, and we'd love to shake your hand. And I want Mrs. Guard here as well, because as she stated, I think the hardest job of the city is being the wife of the mayor, and she deserves credit. So if that's okay, Mrs. Guard and Mayor, if you could come down.[1027.01][1027.01](applause) So for those in the audience and at home, what we've prepared is a nice plaque to hold his gavel. And, oh, good, if it...[1044.16][1044.16](laughter) So, Mayor Guard, thank you. As your administrator, I can't tell you how much it's meant to me to serve you. If it's okay, I'd love senior staff to have the same...
All together, Cooper. Oh. They don't want to do that.[1066.16][1066.16](laughter)
For all your work. I appreciate you. Thank you.[1073.16][1073.16](laughter) (applause) Your Honor, I would also like to say thank you to Debbie and you for all that you have done for the community. I'm not sure a lot of people know that some people put their name in to lead, and some people are asked to lead. And you were asked by many citizens to lead us because you're a man of integrity. You make a decision. You're true to your word, and people can count on you. And I appreciate all the time and work you put in to make Riverton better. When you stepped in, it wasn't looking really good. Things weren't happening. Economic development wasn't happening. Healthcare wasn't happening. People weren't involved. They just kind of gave up. And you brought hope, and you led, and you about killed yourself doing it. And so I'm grateful, and I know you missed a lot of time in dinner, so here's for you and Deb. Take her out to dinner, since you missed so many. Thank you.
Thank you.[1157.75][1157.75](applause) I appreciate all that, and I get the closing comments, so I'll feed back in a minute. Let's move on to council roundtable. We're at the end of our meeting this evening. Carla, do you have anything to add tonight?
Your Honor, I just want to echo what Christie and everybody else said. I really appreciate everything you've done. You've been an amazing mayor, and the door's always open. You give out your phone number. You're always available. You attend practically every event, and it is very much appreciated. I just want to thank you.
Thanks, Carla. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay. Thank you. Dean?
Mr. Mayor, I haven't been to any other meetings since our last meeting, but I'd also like to extend my appreciation to you to bring me on as a new council member. It was kind of a learning curve, but you were patient, and just seeing what you've done for our city, the weeds are going to miss you. I don't know what they're going to do. They're just going to have to use that fancy shovel of yours to give them a hard time.
I think the weeds... I think God's in charge of those, and he said that we'd have them for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Guard.
You're welcome. Thank you. Kyle?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Christie?
I have not attended any meetings, but I do appreciate our city staff for cleaning up the roads the last couple of weeks and the cold and the time they've been putting in, so...
Thank you. Kyle?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things. I want to express appreciation on behalf of staff for the holiday hams. The council has been very supportive of staff, and I've heard from several employees that they appreciate that gesture, and it will go a long way this holiday season. As we're talking about the holidays, I want to remind the public that our holiday hours will be this Friday and the upcoming Friday. We will be open until noon, and then come Monday, we'll have normal working hours. So this Friday and next, we're open from 8 until noon. Oh, I'm so glad Kristen's here. I expect everybody to show up on Monday, but technically, we're closed on Monday.[1323.01][1323.01](laughter) So I think we should give our employees Monday off for the holidays. So this upcoming Monday, City Hall will be closed, and we'll have normal operating hours on Tuesday. And then I think it's appropriate to just say how dang proud I am of our crews for working hard through the snowstorm. Give you a little bit of a scale and scope to what our crews have been dealing with. I know Brian's got some numbers he can report to you, if you wouldn't mind doing that briefly.
Please.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. Our operations division manager today reported to me that as of today, they've removed 9,579 cubic yards of snow off the roadways, which accounts for about 2,825 tons of snow. They've been reporting to work at 3:00 a.m. in the morning before traffic is almost unbearable, and working till 3:00 in the afternoon, 12-hour shifts. Most of the guys are planning to flex that time and not even taking overtime. They just want to be out and serve the community. So I, as well, am very proud of our team and the support we get from you guys. You buy the diesel.
Thank you. Kyle, we got that plaque from you and I at that meeting.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I have one other item. You know, it's kind of a nice thing to receive positive feedback and recognition, and that happened this last week. The Wind River Job Corps had its community partnership meeting, and at that meeting, it recognized the city of Riverton and gave what they call the Appy Award. But basically, this is a quarterly award, and they award it to people in the community who partner well with Job Corps and try to accomplish the mission that Job Corps has, which is basically improving the skill set of their students and clients. So the city was recognized. A lot of this goes to the credit of Mayor Guard for his work with their students to get them out in the community and replaced heaving sidewalks. This was a long... A project that was long coming, I would say. And then I also thank the city for the job shadow opportunities that we've provided, most recently with our sanitation truck employees. So I'll display this for you. Hopefully, I don't have to get another photo tonight.[1487.12][1487.12](laughter) But this was awarded to the city of Riverton, but I really believe that this is for Mayor Guard.
Thanks, Kyle. It has the city's name all over it, so we probably ought to hang it up in the city sometime.[1499.12][1499.12](laughter) Thank you. You know, it's been a wonderful opportunity to be the mayor of Riverton, and I've lived here all my life, and I didn't ever see it as a job that was too hard to do. And when you're in the service of your fellow man, you're in the service of your God, and I truly believe that. And I, from time to time, felt his hand in what was happening. COVID was a big thing, and as I went over to the Lander Hospital to view the first four victims that were taken by the pandemic, my wife mentioned to me, "Do you think this is a really good idea?" And I never even had that fear that it wasn't a good idea to go do what needed to be done. And so I've always been grateful for the Overwatch that I've had, why I've had this job. This last two weeks, we had an opportunity... Kyle was kind enough to invite me to a recognition of a young man that was in Special Olympics. We did it right here in this room. He's going to be able to go to Germany and carry the torch for the Games this summer. And all of the police departments participated in that and many others. So you don't get to see all the rewards that you get when you're the mayor, and so there's a lot of those things that come along, and you get invited to participate in things that are only uplifting in every way. And so I appreciated that. I also appreciated this last two weeks. I got to do CWC basketball, and what a wonderful opportunity that is for me to participate. The Job Corps, you know, when I first came on the council, the Job Corps didn't even have a spot of dirt. And over the years, it's grown to be a fabulous facility. Can't get on campus without an invitation, and when you get that invitation, you ought to go. And so I was glad to get that invitation, and nice of Kyle to go with me. I've always had good administrators. I'm thrilled with the city's staff. I could not have a better staff. I tell this story often, and people get tired of it, but Mia Harris is a real example of a city employee that reaches out. And we had a bump in the road, and instead of being negative, she was positive. And it made a big deal, not a little deal, a big financial deal. And it's been good for the city. It's been good for... My phone rang 300 times less per month, and I really did appreciate... So you don't, you don't get to see all the rewards that you get when you're the mayor. And so there's a lot of those things that come along and, and you get invited to participate in things that, that are only uplifting in every way. And so I appreciated that. I also appreciated this last two weeks. I got to do CWC basketball. And what a wonderful opportunity that is for me to participate. The Job Corps, you know, when I first came on the council, the Job Corps didn't even have a spot of dirt. And over the years, it's grown to be a fabulous facility. Can't get on campus without an invitation. And when you get that invitation, you oughta go. And so I was glad to get that invitation and, and nice of Kyle to go with me. I've always had good administrators. I'm thrilled with the city's staff. I could not have a better staff. I tell the que, I tell this story often and people get tired of it, but Mia Harris is a, is a real example of a city employee that reaches out. And we had a bump in the road and instead of being negative, she was positive. And it made a big deal, it made a big deal, not a little deal, a big financial deal. And it's been good for the city. It's been good for, my phone rang 300 times less per month. And I really did appreciate every city employee. And as I am able to work my way around town, I know there's criticism that comes out and there's another new city truck just mentioned to me. We've done a real good job with our budget. Our budget is, has been in line, maintained. Both of the administrators that I got to work with were great and they did their jobs well. And my only problem with administrators is that when they're good enough, they get hired away. And we're not, we're not big enough to, to keep them anchored. And so I, I don't look forward to the day that Kyle gets a better offer, but I bet he will. I hope he does. He's a great administrator. Our city's staff is amazing, right down to the lawnmower seasonal help. I get a picture on my phone of, of a guy asleep on a mower in Teeter Park. Now, Teeter Park is kind of near and dear to my heart because that's just a half a block from where I was raised on Broadway. And we played a lot of time, we put a lot of time in Teeter Park. And never had I yet seen an in-city employee getting rest. I don't know if he was breaking any rules. Probably it was his lunch hour. Probably had his watch set and he woke up and went back to mowing. I do appreciate city staff and I know how hard it is to be, to be staff. So my thanks goes out to staff. The citizen committees that we have, the tree board, you know, I just don't think people understand how much work goes into the tree board. They have all the trees numbered, every one of them. It's in the thousands. And they know what type of tree it is and they know what it needs. They know when it was planted and they know when it died. And they do their job without a lot of fanfare. The FAST group, how many times have we tried and so far accomplished saving the airplane? Not been easy, has it? And, and there's so many people to thank for that. Can't name them all that work on that, that committee. The cooperation that we've enjoyed from our other cities in Fremont County has been exceptional. And I have friends in the mayor's office in all of those locations. And I can stop and, and we can share ideas and share money and we can, we can just do a lot of things which other, other mayors could not. I have a lot of figures here that I would like to be public, but I think that I'm gonna skip that. I, I cherish the relationship with staff and I don't think the people of Riverton understand the cost. And so I'm gonna forego that, but it is a real, it is a real problem. There's 99 municipalities, according to the Wyoming Association of Governments. There's 13 administrators in those 99, half of which still work under strong mayors. There's three mayor assistants inside the state of Wyoming. It leaves, or somewhere around 86 to 90 municipalities that work on a strong mayor. All of the mayors, except for one, still reside in Riverton. It's important that we understand that a mayor doesn't get paid monetarily. He gets paid through the blessings of working for his fellow citizens. And those also come from the fact that how they get voted into place. And so with that said, we've had, we've had some real success. We've sold some land and generated dollars for the city. We've saved some positions and saved money for the city. In my shorthand calculation, we haven't replaced Tony yet. We've moved people up from inside our city at a cost of $46,000. Saved advertising fees and things like that. And we're somewhere around $95,000 savings at this point. I think it's important to understand that our police officers do their job. Many times, people are critical about the police. And I get a lot of conversations of the policing is just not doing well. I want the chief to know that policing does a good job in Riverton, Wyoming. I've been out with them and I have always, I'm astounded at 1:00 in the morning how kind these guys are and how many times they do the exact same thing over and over, only to be let loose to do it again the next day. And so I appreciate the, the, the police officers. It's a thankless job, but I want you to know that this mayor does appreciate what you do. With that said, I don't know that there's any other way to say thank you for allowing me to be a mayor of Riverton for the time that I was. And I really did appreciate it and I will continue to do my very best to help and, and press along where things are worthy of, of moving forward. And I would thank the communication, the commu, I would thank the community from the bottom of my heart for the opportunity to be your mayor. Thank you. So we don't have any executive for a change. Must not have got any hate mail this week. So with that said, it's cold outside and I would encourage people to be safe and drive home with ease and, and try to keep yourself from any accidents. And, and we'll look forward to when we meet each other again. This meeting stands adjourned at 7:53 and thank you for coming.